So how we address that, I guess, going forward. Future bond funded projects, we have a variety of projects that are in development. That can also, you know, we can use bond funds to use, to leverage our federal eight dollars, to leverage community crossing dollars, to take a two million dollar bond, instead of building one bridge, build multiple bridges and small structures because we can leverage those other dollars with those bond funds. So, wanted to bring it to this board because it had to go through this board for approval, I just didn't. So that's our mission is to eliminate the fatal and serious injuries resulting from traffic crashes. All these projects that we're doing are not just to make the roads bigger and better. We're trying to eliminate those concrete walls that are up on all those small structures. Those, those are unsafe. We're trying to get the, the striping project, the sign project, those are all based on safety projects. Roads in poor condition have worse crash ratings than roads in good condition. So, all those things we do, we make those decisions based on trying to reach the zero gas on the transportation system. In general, we say around, around our departments, just get home safe. We want people to get home safe, we want our employees to get home safe. We want your family members to get home safe. So, we don't need all the, do the crash cleanup. I mean, that's really what we're trying to bring up. So, went through it kind of fast, but if there's any questions.
You mentioned the comprehensive plan and the overlay plan, I believe we're going to be discussing that in March. Can you just give us a kind of a brief update of where we're at in that process?
Um, so in the process, um, the area plan commission, which wasn't like directly included in the conversation, it shouldn't have been, it's not my, you know, the planning as far zoning goes, which would comp plan does, planning and zoning for the future, if some development wanted to come in. So that's updating the comprehensive plan, which is more zoning, where the thoroughfare plan part of it came in kind of after the fact, so we had the request for proposals went out to consultants that do that line of work. Then it was revised to include to the thoroughfare plan and local road safety plan update. That was due to conversations that had been had about the funding mechanism that could be used for the thoroughfare plan. Wasn't directly involved in those conversations, but I had mentioned the thoroughfare plan. And it's my understanding there was a discussion about how that could be funded using the in lieu payment of, of the taxes from the IDC. They're again, kind of talking stuff I don't really know, but as far as where it's at right now, the proposals that then been submitted, including the thoroughfare plan, and I was at area plan commission meeting last week to talk about the thoroughfare plan and its value and the purpose of doing it. And, um, the discussion amongst area plant members was the next steps would be looking at a consultant and looking into what the scope of the contract would be and the funding mechanism to pay for.
Thank you.
So when we were at the APC meeting the other night, when Nick spoke on that, um, we did go through a lot of packets. Narrowing that down, I fully expect them to be in here asking for, for more or a way to do it and preferably do both of them together.
And there's a cost savings with doing them together, is that accurate?
The way I understood it, yes, from the standpoint of when they're hosting all the public meetings. They're only having to host, I mean, they can, they can do essentially both projects at the same time during the public meetings and that such.
Yeah, I think the planning documents would still cost the same if you just went down and made a plan in a document. The big part of the thoroughfare plan and the comprehensive plan is getting public engagement. You've got to have public support. It's got to be adopted by the same boards, but the expensive part of adopting a plan is holding those meetings, reaching out to the people to get them to know about the meeting, to get them to come to the meeting and gather their input. And that's engaging those at the same time. We won't have to call them back for the same meeting or have the same consultant run the same meeting about the same topic, similar topic.
Nick, you had mentioned, you had said that concrete walls are dangerous. And if you were going to replace those concrete walls, what would you replace it with and what would be the expense there?
So what we do when we replace, so the short answer is you can't just go replace the concrete wall. So, that structure's width is set. So in order to make it wider, which would, what you'd have to do to eliminate the concrete wall, we would have to widen out a structure, you're basically replacing the structure. You're talking about stuff that's built in the thirties, mostly in poor condition anyway. So, what we do is we replace a structure that has concrete walls on the side. We try to widen it if we can to eliminate it. It takes the hazard completely away from the driver driving down the road. Guard rail is also unsafe. However, it's a lot safer than a concrete abutment that's sticking up, um, that's very flat and is unforgiving. So guard rail is the next best option, but we would still widen out the roadway so that there's a clear path to get through, so farm equipment can get through, and it then provides a safer route. If we can get rid of it, that's the best case scenario. No, we have long-term maintenance and there's no obstruction out there for a driver to make a mistake or move over too far and hit that guard rail.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good information, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Jewel, I'll discuss the council committees.
Yeah, so real quickly, and I'll try and keep this question this from the other group, is Jennifer asked me to speak kind of what is the role of the council around the different committees. A little concentration to how certain committees have been set up. The, this body can create whichever committee that it deems necessary to assist in your duties. So, if it's tied to the fiscal responsibilities of the county and this body, you can set up a committee for that. So, I think one of the questions is, you know, if the people that we believe needs to sit on a compensation committee or an insurance committee or things of that like aren't on the county, why can't we set one up separately as the council? And the answer to that is yes. It does tie into the information that you will consider in creating budgets, salary limits, things of that nature. The best case scenario is that you work together with the executive branch and get that thing moving forward. That's always the best, that's what I've said in the past four years that I've been here. And so, that obviously would be my recommendation, is if you can get to that point. But, you need to do what you need to do in order to make the decisions that you will make, the fiscal, uh, steps that the county will take, so.
And currently, there isn't a resolution or a process in place. It's just historically councils, commissioners have worked together to create those?
Yep, so I, I don't know how that has actually happened in the past because I haven't been part of that. I know that there have been committees that people have worked together, but I don't think that this body has something set forth specifically. I know that I never created anything for you to say, this is how the committee's going to be created. I don't know that there's anything in the county that says this is how it's going to be created. But, my recommendation would be if this council wants to take the step to creating your own advisory subcommittee essentially, that you do that by way of resolution. So it's there in writing, taken action by this council, so that four years down the road, it's not, what we used to do at this with, you have a document that you look at, that's how it's formed.
Can the, um, with respect to the insurance committee and the compensation committee, that it plainly states that the commissioners are the ones that get to appoint those members to those committees? Can the council decide that, well, wait a minute, we want to add him, him, her, her, or maybe even somebody from the public on that committee?
So, so when you have something that specifically states the makeup and it gives the power to that executive, it's the executives. Okay, right, it is that, we've talked about this a little bit, those lanes that you have to fall into.
Okay, yeah.
So when that power's given to one, great to the government, another one cannot.
Okay.
But, that doesn't prevent you from having your own advisory council within your own council itself.
And would that, would that own, let's assume for a moment that that's what took place. Would those two, three, four people appointed by this board, just for happenstance, would they be able to sit in on the meeting with the current insurance or compensation committee?
Well, first of all, I would recommend that it not be four, because then you'd have a quorum of this council and then you'd have to advertise us probably.
Okay, thank you.
The, and the question that I have is, I don't know the makeup of the current council. If you have a committee that is created by the commission and it's got members of the council on it, you're always going to have to be mindful as to how many people from this council are at that meeting.
Okay, yeah.
And participating in that meeting. Because once you get to a quorum, you trigger open door law.
Yeah, I understand. Which is four or more?
So, um, and then I don't know how those committees are set up. Open meetings or closed meetings. If they're closed meetings to go over information, then you want to make sure that you don't violate that closed meeting. So, I can tell you, generally speaking, when you talk about insurance, oftentimes those are going to be closed meetings. If this, every community is different, but if this community takes into consideration individual cases for lasering off policies and stuff like that, even if you don't share names, oftentimes that information can lead somebody to know who that is, and then you run into HIPAA issues. And so there's a, there are so many different layers that come into play that you want to be careful without, who has access to certain information.
Thank you.
What exactly were your conversations with Jennifer about the committees?
It's just how does, how does it work forward? So, if, if we can't get an individual who the council wanted to see on a committee, can, what's, what options are there?
What was it again, I'm sorry?
If, if a individual council member, that, that's a Jennifer, is the executive of this body, would like to be on a committee from the commissioners, is not on that committee, then what are our options? And I can tell you that one of the things that Jennifer and I talked about is reaching out. So I, I did reach out after it was announced that Beth was moving over to be the county attorney. I reached out to Beth to say, hey, here are some ideas that Jennifer has for the commission, and you know, that's enough sense right there.
So for clarity, she asked you, hey, how can we get on a committee if we haven't been put on a committee? Am I summing that up right? I just want to make sure I'm understanding. I'm trying to get understanding how the conversation came about, it's on the agenda.
I think it's what are the rules that govern what the council can do regarding committees? As opposed to, uh, what the commissioners do on committees? And with that, it's my position or my advice is, my opinion is, if it deals with the fiscal considerations for the county, that even if you're not on whatever the county committee is, you can create your own separate committees to get information regarding that.
Are you saying then there could be like two compensation committees?
If that's what this council wants to do and have a body that advises it regarding compensation for considerations that are particular to this council, then yeah, you can.
Another reason I ask this, not only what has happened in the last few weeks, but something else I've brought up the last, I think, three years. There is a statute that says elected officials and department heads have to turn in their salary requests, I believe it's by the end of June. Those salary recommendations are given to the commissioners at the first, their first meeting in July for their comment, and then the commissioners then give the council their recommendations on salaries. And so, it seemed like maybe there's a possibility or a situation where if we're getting recommendations from the commissioners, we have our compensation committee review those recommendations and present that to the council as well. So that was another question that I had.
Wouldn't we just have the budget committee do that?
Or compensation, because compensation committee would be looking at number of positions and that full compensation package. And, I don't believe we've had the budget committee look at that stuff in the last few years, I don't, I don't think.
You know, I bought lunches from the budget?
I was about to say.
I wasn't involved with the budget as a thing, so.
Well, I, you know, one of the comments I had was just, again, commissioners can do what they need to do. Looking at Dan Lamar, because I want to pick on him today because he hasn't gotten any attention, is he spent, what, forty plus years in insurance? And so, a lot of, a lot of the boards I've been on, Jewel, have, you know, you recognize what, what expertise or experience does each member bring to the, to the board? And in this case, I look at Dan and I see the word insurance all over his forehead. He is more than that to this council, but, so when he, when he didn't get selected to be on the insurance committee, you know, I think I said something to Jennifer, like, you know, this is sort of his, his thing. He knows it probably better than anybody in the room. And so, that, that was one of the things I brought up, just because generally, a lot, again, a lot of the boards I've been on, you, you look at sort of the expertise that each member brings, and then you try to utilize or exploit that talent or skillset or, you know, experience. And so that, again, I just bring that up as part of the context of Aaron's question, and just in terms of would it make sense, because I think he could really benefit that committee.
Would the same apply for me for having a degree in HR? I didn't know if you guys had said the same about me being on the compensation committee.
I was just, honestly, I'm just talking about the removal of Dan, but I think, I think we ought to all fill out to your point, Aaron, I think we all ought to. Again, I'm all, I'm all about templates today, obviously, but one of the templates that a lot of boards I've been on have used is just, hey, tell us your degree and what have you done in your professional life that maybe falls into the strategic planning doc, you know, bucket. In your case, Aaron, I think you have a degree from IU on a, in HR, is that right? So, you know, that would go on there, and then John, I mean, we come back to you, John, but, um, I'm just kidding.
I've got ninety-eight point six.
Exactly. No, um, so I just, I think those.
You can help us with the fueling station since you buy gas.
I think this is part of what maybe, and, and again, I've, I've tried to let, you know, Jennifer is settling into this role, and I think it's just something, again, now that I've been on here for a minute, when that happened with Dan, I was like, oh, that might not be the best answer for the county, and yet it's not my call. It was just, hey, hey Jewel, what do you got for us in terms of what's allowed and what's not allowed? So I hope that provides some more context to the council, because I haven't really talked to anyone.
And you, and you brought it up specifically, it, it's, you know, while it may make sense in your mind, it's not your call.
Right, it's not my call.
I can tell you that I have given advice, not necessarily to this body, before members of this body, but to other bodies where you have kind of those disagreements, and you're, one body's saying, it should be this way, it should be this way, it should be this way. And, not that you want to look at something else, but oftentimes my advice is, you ran for the wrong office then, right?
Yeah.
What'd you say?
You ran for the wrong office.
Oh my god, somebody clip that for me. Alright, keep going.
It, because certain, each body has a specific duty, and, and so that, that's something to consider.
Yeah.
As we move on, but that's why we had the discussion is, what can we do to get this information, to take advantage of Dan's knowledge and experience in insurance, how can we utilize it?
Right.
Create your own.
Yeah.
Because common, again, compensation would include benefits.
Correct.
Which falls under the council. Okay, so when it comes to like, ran for the wrong office, that's really something that falls under the council?
I, I mean, appointing to different bodies, where it makes sense that a separate body should appoint somebody from this body to that, that's where.
Okay.
And then the reason they took me off of that, that position on the, the insurance was because I made a recommendation that one of the commissioners disagreed with, and I stood strong on that, that we don't want to let, we don't want to compromise ourselves and have a HIPAA situation when it can be prevented.
Jewel, I have a question. There, there are three members up here on this council, and it's public knowledge that are on the insurance committee and the compensation committee, and it's all public knowledge, there are three of them. Let's assume for a moment that one of them want to resign their position and say, I don't want to be on this committee. Is it the commissioners that, well, I know it's the commissioners that assigned that individual, the, the, the new replacement. But does, do the commissioners have to pick a current council member, or can they pick anybody?
I don't know the rule, because I don't know how that is set up, so I, I just don't have an answer for you right now. I can look into that and get you.
If you'd be so kind, thank you.
The other reason I asked him this is because in years past, we always had a three-person budget committee. We've not done that to the fullest in the last two years. I thought that process has worked really well. And so I was asking Jewel about the proper process to do budget committee, and if we want to adopt a resolution for any of these three committees that we've been discussing today.
And again, that is my recommendation, because if you're going to go through that process, you want it in writing, action taken by this council. Kind of like a local rule for you guys.
So how would the council prefer to move forward with this? Do we want to have Jewel draft up a resolution that we can review, or, sorry, yeah, a resolution that we can review at the next meeting? Or, just move forward without something, a procedure in place?
So there's a current compensation and insurance committee. Multiple members of the council have been on it, for now creating, or thinking about creating our own, but you have three current members on the council who will sit on those committees and bring information back to the council. Are you concerned that the three of us sitting on those are not going to bring the information back?
I'm not sure that all three are going to participate in those two committees.
Are you planning on participating, John, Dustin? Uh, I, I mean, you, you all participated in the past, and I'm pretty sure will participate. I, I go back to it again, I'm, I'm looking at these items on the agenda, and it's like, it's like people's balls were taken away, or they didn't get picked on the team, so they're taking their balls and going home. Like, I didn't get picked, so I'm going to go and create my own team, and I'm just kind of like, when you all were picked to be on committees? We just sat there and were like, okay, you guys are on the committees, and you brought information back to us, and we were like, alright, great. Like, no one, no one threw a fit and got mad. Like, I, again, I see Jewel coming up, talking about committees being created and assigned in a commissioners' meeting. Bob Clutter said, oh, the council president has to get permission for council members to be assigned on committees. The biggest lie. No, that's not true. The commissioners, you know, reassigned or reshuffled who they want on the committees, and last year, at the end of the year, they took the former council president off of a committee. Dan just said they took him off because he didn't agree with something. They took Ken Hedge off of a committee because he didn't agree with something. I'm just like, everyone talks about like, let's work together, let's do this. The commissioners have picked new people to work on committees, three of the seven council members. Let us go and get some work done, bring you information back, and let's see what happens. Going and reinventing the wheel and creating, you now have elected officials who have asked, and Debbie Ottinger, forgive me for putting you on the spot, you came up here passionately and said, we want elected officials to be included in these decisions. I think the commissioners took that to heart and put multiple elected officials on both committees. I've gotten emails from both commissioners in the last twenty-four hours of meetings, of compensation and insurance committee meetings happening within the next three weeks. Let these committees go and do some work, bring some results back, and see what happens. Why are we reinventing the wheel, creating more meetings that are unnecessary? Like, let's see what happens. We've talked about all of this thing, all these things happening, everybody saying, let's work together, let's see what happens first.
So if the commissioners create a budget committee, because that is.
This is not a budget committee, I'm talking about insurance and compensation specifically. Budget is always been with the council.
So what information can you share with us about how those two committees are going to be set up?
We, we won't know. We won't, but, but you won't know Jennifer until the commissioners have their first meetings with all of the new members.
You just said that you've got meetings set up over the next.
They just set them up. They just set the meetings up for the twenty-sixth and I think the twenty-seventh. If I'm not mistaken, Sheriff Harris was the last one who just sent an email this morning to say, whatever day works for him. Am I not? Did you, he did this morning. They just said, we're going to set up meetings and have our first meetings.
With, with all due respect to Aaron, I'm just going to chime in from where I said. One, I'm not upset, and I haven't taken my ball and gone home about, about, about committees, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Because I'm not, I'm not upset.
I shouldn't say that, you're right.
I don't have, I don't really, I just want the county to be served, and I think they will be served. Secondly, I was at the commissioners' meeting, I think Bob Clutter said it's generally, and again, I don't have the tape in front of me, I think he said it's generally been the practice that the two presidents have gotten together and created committees. I don't think he lied, but I could be mistaken, so I'm just, just throwing that out. Thirdly, as it relates to Jennifer putting these things on the agenda, I can just tell you, as a matter of, again, from my experience on boards, if I were a new president, I would have the attorney up here probably longer than he's been this, this meeting, because I want to get clarity on just how things happen. I think part of Jennifer's impetus here, and now that I'm a vice president, I can tell you because I've talked to her, is just on the budget committee specifically, that was a big impetus for having him up here to say, should we have a resolution? I don't think it's people getting upset and their balls, taking their balls home with them because they can't play ball, whatever, I should not put that on there. And then lastly, I mean, part of this was just, like, again, I brought, Dan didn't come to me like upset, I just said, Jennifer, I think it's too bad when a commission, when the commissioners don't choose somebody who's spent their entire career in, in the insurance industry. So that's, that, and if that means I'm upset, I wasn't upset, I just was concerned about that level of talent being in the room to help that. So, again, you guys have both provided context on why people might have been selected or taken away. That was the emphasis. So I, I don't think Jennifer deserves as much criticism about putting these items on the agenda when in fact she's the new president and she wants to get clarity. It's a new day, we can all agree, it's a new day in the county. Because the commissioners have moved quickly and they've moved with different, you know, direction. That's fine. I, I don't have any, we don't have a lack of confidence, we're also finding out what might work best, what's legal, what's not legal. So I, I really, I would just hope that you could taper your comments a little bit on why these things are hitting the agenda.
You, you hit the, you said it's a new day. Since it's a new day, you have, it's a new day, it's new commissioners, Jennifer's been on this council longer than me. So she knows about, the, the clarity, that was my point in asking Jewel, what was Jennifer's reasoning for calling you and asking about the committees? And, and he said budget, and then I also asked, hey, was it about putting people on different committees and what they were? I was on a plane, and I clearly heard what Bob Clutter said, because I interjected. So, well, you commented, I want to clarify what I heard. So again, I, I, I go back to it, Jennifer's been on the committees, both, both of them, or at least one of them. So, it's a new, you said it best, great commentary, it's a new day. So if it's a new day, and multiple members up here have been on committees before, it's a new day, let's see what the new day brings. It's an opportunity for everyone, and when it comes to any other committee besides the budget, fiscal fiduciary responsibility of a council, budget-wise, let, let's do that. That's, that is traditionally the only committee that we have had.
You had the compensation committee as well, we had one for the first, Aaron, correct if I'm wrong, but you led the former compensation committee that was dissolved.
Perfect timing.
And then.
Perfect.
And then we tried to start a new one.
And the commissioners took it over.
Well, the, but the procedure on that was never adopted.
The procedure, so again, the procedure was never adopted, and for the last three years, the procedure has been that the commissioners have ran it. And then they created the insurance committee, I'm sorry, the compensation committee, and since then, the commissioners have ran it. So all of a sudden, the commissioners changed, I didn't see anyone say anything about Ken Hedge being removed from the insurance and compensation committee last year. We, we never had a single discussion on this, we, we, we didn't have, we didn't, no one said a single word about it.
But he could have brought, I mean, Aaron, I wish he would have brought it up, because then we would have had Jewel at the podium to tell us what was legal or what was, what's according to statute and what's outside. And so, he didn't bring it up, he tried to make amends vis a vis email.
And can he reach out to you?
Yeah, he did.
Okay.
But he didn't bring it up publicly, and we didn't have him up here. I'm just saying, he could have.
He, he could.
And we could have had an answer with some more clarity, we didn't. So this is actually, I think this is good, we're getting clarity on
You're right.
what's doable, what's not doable, what's, what's acceptable.
And the legality to what Jewel has clearly said is, the commissioners on, from the executive side, if they've created a committee, they're responsible for whoever they want to put on it, and if we want to create one, we can. And what I've said is, we have existing committees, having committees not work in the past. Have we had any issue with it?
There's been complaints.
Okay, okay, and so if there, if there've been complaints, and we're talking about us, maybe it was the individuals that wanted the committees up here. So now you have new members. So let's, again, it's a new day, good, good terminology, Sherri. I just, I think recreating another committee here without giving the existing committees an opportunity to shot, especially with a new elected officials on it, it's kind of like, again, here, we, we don't like this, let's go, let's go do something. Again, we can do whatever we want, I just think the existing committees that are now fresh and new with a different insights and perspectives will probably work fine, but.
What is everyone's opinion on a resolution for the creation of a budget committee? Do we just want to?
What is the new committee?
I think the budget committee.
Oh.
I would suggest, let's, let's see how it goes, because we can create a resolution at any time. If we're dissatisfied with the information that we're getting, we can then have a resolution drafted and move forward in our own direction then. Because I, it, it can be counterproductive to have, us have, and, you know, it, it, it can be counterproductive.
So we're moving forward without a resolution?
Yeah, I mean, the other way we can do it, I mean, if you're just, especially just talking about budget.
Budget, yeah.
Is, I can just create a resolution, and then you guys can look at it, amend it, change it, decide not to do anything with it.
I think that's a great idea.
So.
Just to look at it.
Well, and have, have it, well, we can have it in.
We can accept it or reject it.
Yeah, we don't have to enact it because it's, the wits on the table if we need to take action.
What I'll do is I'll bring a resolution for the budget.
There were, if I may. Um, with, with respect to Bob Clutter, he had served this community for almost twenty years. And I guarantee you, Bob Clutter is not a liar, and I want that, that to be made public. Councilman Williams said he lied.
I stand by that statement, for the record.
Okay, okay, but I want this community to know that Bob Clutter is not a liar. Uh, with that being said, I, I, I have a question for the Commissioner Lawson, if you'd be so kind to come forward, please, thank you. Thank you for your input, Jewel, thank you. Uh, there, there were two, me and Dan, we were on that insurance committee. And then, I, I didn't receive a phone call, and I know Dan didn't receive a phone call. If anybody else, if, if anybody else did not receive a phone call, I'm not aware of, or if they did receive a phone call from the current commissioners, being yourself, Tim Byer, and Mr. Powell. Uh, with respect to the, say, you're gonna be released, I didn't know until after it happened. And I think it was Dan that called me and told me that I was off of that committee. So with that being said, Mr. Lawson, were you in any of the, of the discussion that said, let's take these folks off of these committees that were already formed, and let's put these others on the committee? Were you part of those discussions, and if not, what would be your humble opinion, why you were or were not involved?
And to make sure I'm clear on this, you're talking about the new committees, correct?
Yes.
That, that were just appointed last month?
Yes, indeed, yes.
Or whenever it was done, it was after the first of the year, no, I was not involved with that at all.
And do you have an opinion of why you were not?
That both of you were taken off the committee, uh, or, or that Jennifer was taken off, or that I was taken off until the new committee was announced.
And it, and it comes back to what you heard me say a little while ago about decency. Doing the right thing because it's the right thing to do. Those two commissioners didn't even have the decency to call any of us up and say, you're gonna put somebody else on this committee, okay, give me a reason why. You don't have to if you don't want to, but if you'd be so kind, give me a reason why, it's, it's just about common decency. That's it, and, and, and Mr. Williams, there, there are, I hear Bob Clutter telling me in my ear, Kevin, sometimes it is better just to sit there and say nothing. I could say so many things up here to embarrass you right now, but I know, excuse me, I know if I did, that I would be sued.
Take heed.
So I'm gonna calm down.
He's right, take heed.
Uh, no, I'm not done, Don, Mr. Lawson, no, we're not moving on, you can't gavel me down, Mr. Lawson, I have a question.
We're going to discuss the budget hearing dates.
It's an open discussion, you can't gavel somebody down.
Well, we're moving on.
Oh, so, so is this a dictatorship there?
No, it's not.
So I can't ask a question?
We're moving on.
But, so he gets to ask the question, I can't?
I.
But he gets to ask the question.
He hit the gavel when he was talking.
So am I not allowed to ask, hold on, I'm gonna ask my legal counsel. So, so, so does one member get to ask a question and I can't?
So discussion is governed by the chair of the, that the chair can move and close it down, there's no active motion pending for, for consideration.
So do, do, do certain members get to ask certain questions?
I hit the gavel when Kevin was still speaking.
I'm just asking, does he, is he the only one that gets to ask questions, the commissioners?
No, people, everyone has been asking questions today.
He asks a specific question to the commissioner.
So, the next agenda item is our budget hearing dates and the council meeting date change. Uh, I would like to propose that we move our July eighth meeting to July fifteenth, just because the Fourth of July holiday, um, is the weekend before our July eighth meeting. Open to other suggestions, if you prefer to keep it July eighth, that's fine, I thought it would just give us a little bit more time, um, after the Fourth of July holiday.
Fourth of July is a big deal here in Lebanon, so I, I would make a motion to remove from July the eighth, John, to fifteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same side. Motion carries. Um, as far as the budget hearing dates, what I would like to do is on that July fifteenth meeting, after our regular council meeting, we start the first day of our budget hearings, but the only thing that we discuss that day is salary, benefits, and compensation. Historically, that has been the last thing we've done in all of our meetings. Over the last few years, we've, um, had discussions several times that we should be doing that first. So I'd like to reserve the rest of that day to do salaries, benefits, and compensation. And then I'd like to propose that we keep our regular meeting on August twelfth, followed by first day of budget hearings. And then the second two budget hearings days be the following week on August nineteenth and twentieth. And speaking with Baker Tilly, we should have, um, all of our numbers in by the fifteenth. So we can continue the budget hearings on August nineteenth and twentieth.
So August twelfth, and then August nineteenth and twentieth?
Yes, my hope is, is we won't need the twentieth, but keep it, just in case. Debbie and I are gonna be working on that schedule.
So do you want a motion on that, or do we need that, okay.
Okay, we're, is it John? Okay, so those are tentative dates, we just need to verify with, um, Kaylee that the room is available those days.
Okay, okay.
Last day in our new business, um, just to review the council public meeting policy. Um, we did adopt a resolution, I believe it was last February, um, as to public comment. I had a question for Jewel about how this would apply if people online wanted to comment.
And, and I think it still applies, um, they would have to be recognized through the provision, and then I think the rules that apply that you have, uh, adopted, which is name, address, and topic. Um, in there, you have limited it to the non-agenda items, uh, on those rules, uh, for public comment. So as long as that is met, then people online can, can participate. Uh, the one thing that I think is not allowed is for them to take control or to share things, because we had some issues regarding those sorts of.
Uh, while you're up there, I guess, I, I presume that it's probably worth making sure this is clear, cuz I think we're gonna have lots of people with comments, uh, this year, because as I said, it's a new day. Um, so, will the, does, this, um, is understood that we don't have to comment after they comment, right? I mean, if we give somebody two minutes, and they talk about something that wasn't on the agenda and follow all the rules. Technically, we don't have to, it's not required that we say anything, we can, I think historically, based on what I've seen, somebody usually comments and there's a little bit more engagement, but technically, we don't have to, is that accurate?
That, that is absolutely accurate, so even if it is a public hearing, there's, it's not designed to be a give and take between the council and the public. It's not designed for the council to be under questions or interrogation to provide answers. It is for the public to give their opinion on that issue for the public hearing.
Right.
For the non-agenda items, it is to give their opinion on whatever non-agenda item thing it is. There's no obligation for the council to respond. And, and generally speaking, I think it's, it's good to say this as many times as possible, because I know a lot of people get upset, because some places don't allow public comment.
Right.
Under the statutes in Indiana, the open door law does not require public comment. The only time public comment is mandatory is when it is a public hearing that's required by statute. So the fact that the council has adopted a rationale or a rule regarding public comment goes above and beyond what the statutes require in Indiana.
Right, and so then if a person does have public comment and we don't respond, I just wanna make sure they know that we aren't ignoring them, it is absolutely not a disrespectful nod to go to the next speaker.
It is an opportunity for the speaker to provide this council with information.
And if we comment, are we limited to two minutes in response?
I'm sorry.
Are we limited to a time limit in responding?
No, that is directed for the, the public comment.
Okay. Can we comment during public comment?
Can you co, what?
Can we comment during public comment?
Now, you can engage with the speaker if you want to, with the speaker. Uh, there's nothing that prohibits that, but there's nothing that requires it. Uh, I think if it's a, a comment period that you, or a comment that you wanna make on an issue, uh.
You can comment.
Counsel comment or.
Okay.
So then, if you respond, sorry, if you respond, that's part of the two minutes, right, so.
Well, you, the, the limit is the public speaker, so if the public speaker is up here speaking for two minutes, and then there's a response from the council, that individual's two minutes under your rules are still up regardless.
When John Smith comes up and speaks in that two minutes, and if he or she says something offensive, can the president or the vice president gavel them down and say, no more?
Okay, so we're getting close to some constitutional issues, and again, it, it's never a bright line. You can limit speech interration as long as that political, so there's some that's absolutely constitutionally protected. If it is a comment that is intended to or disrupts the public assembly and the operations of this council, then the council can take action and have that individual removed for disrupting that. Um, but it is, in very rare occasions, will I say, oh yeah, you should remove that person from here, because you're always mindful of the constitutional protection, again, thank you.
Anything, any other questions? Thank you for that explanation, old business, Audrey Crum.
Jennifer wanted me to speak on the, um, maximum levy growth quotient that we were denied for page twenty-five. Um, basically, the denial, um, as Baker Tilly has told us, we have a lot of reserves. Um, so they base it on the last four years, so it goes back to twenty twenty-one. Um, it has increasingly gone up from forty-two percent in reserves to twenty-four, we had fifty-five percent. So they're saying that.
That's even more than what we discussed.
Right, and so they're saying that basically, we have enough money to do the projects that we asked for the million dollars to do, is basically what they're asking.
So to combat, so to combat that, Debbie, it would be, uh, as relates to this issue solely, the three-year growth levy appeal, but to have a lower, much more reasonable reserve percentage, uh, the next time we apply.
Correct.
I.e., spend down some of the reserves.
Spend down some of your reserves, I've always stressed rainy day. Um, we don't know what's gonna happen in these Senate bills coming up. We may be struggling to find three million dollars somewhere in this year's budget for next year. So I'm, you know, stressing at fifty-five percent that we use and utilize some of that money for rainy day, cuz we don't know what's gonna happen in the next couple of years.
And we have, um, talked to Baker Tilly about Senate Bill One, and they are monitoring it, and they have said it's too soon to put a figure out there, I know numbers are good, put out there, but they're saying it's too soon, because this number is based on every single part of that, um, Senate bill being adopted. And so they are going to continue to monitor it and run some different, um, scenarios for us as this legislative process proceeds, so.
And I have also put together, and hopefully you guys will, will look at these, are the three main Senate, there's two Senate bills that need, that concern us, and one House bill. I've put just a basic, kind of, I received it from A, so it's just a basic synopsis of, of what they would do to the county. Um, I also put in here for you guys to look at is, um, something from our Auditors Association that they have taken to the Senate to try to fight this, and there are numbers on the back two pages that kind of show you our general fund and what could happen to it if, if these go through. Um, there are also resolutions that you can put in place, there are three counties in Indiana that have done that. So I've put copies of those in here as well, so hopefully you guys can kind of look over, I tried to make it as simple, 'cause there's a lot of information out there, um, that maybe we can discuss at the next meeting, and if we need Jewel to write up a resolution to help us with that, then.
Yep, I, um, I believe it's Janestown, um, reached out, and they're trying to get, um, a bunch of us.
The school boards are getting in on it.
Yes, to sign in on this resolution, which I have for Jewel, and unfortunately.
The school boards are gonna lose a lot, a lot of money.
Um, the resolution was presented to me on Thursday or Friday after our agenda was made, so if I send that to Jewel, and he will be addressing that, dressing that with us in March. Any questions for, for auditor? Um, with that, we'll open it for public comment, I ju, I do just wanna share the rules that we were just discussing. Um, public comments from the non-agenda items, uh, if you wish to speak, you do have to provide your name, address, and the issues on which you'd like to be heard. Um, there is a two-minute limit, I will, I'll keep track at, at, okay, Mr. Van Horn is going to keep track at thirty seconds. Um, Mr. Van Horn will raise this orange folder just so you notice it for thirty seconds. I'm also gonna ask that we allow everyone in person to speak first, and then we'll switch to online. There, there can be a delay, and I know it's hard for people online to see if someone's in the podium, so we can avoid the, the lag between that, so we'll start with everyone who's here in person.
Bloom County Prosecutor, County's two twenty, us, Washington Street. Um, you guys were just talking about legislation, that's what I wanna talk about. There's House Bill, uh, one thousand and six, it's one of the governor's priority bills that references prosecutor's offices. Um, in that bill, if this, um, if counties meet certain minimum requirements in funding the prosecutor's office salaries, then you'll get, right now, it's written, you get fifty percent back on those salaries. So as it, as it relates right now, if we were to spend, I think, probably spend a hundred thousand dollars, as written right now, you're gonna get six hundred thousand dollars back. So, um, again, it's one of the governor's priority bills, it's, uh, uh, got out of the Courts Committee in the House, and now it's in the ways, ways, ways of means, so, again, this whole process, you know, I, I used to be a lobbyist, and everything, everything was well, and then at the very end during conference committees, things get yanked, pulled, you can't really do anything about it. So something very similar to this bill, to this bill was, um, was, uh, two, uh, last year. And, uh, it sailed through the House and the Senate, but then at the very end, it got pulled. So you just never know, but I just wanna let you know about that bill, so if you are talking to legislators in the House, it's House Bill one thousand and six.
Thank you. Any other public comments, people?
Lisa Ritter, Bloom County Clerk.
So I'm just gonna say, according to the text messages, the emails, and everything I've received, is commissioners and the council can't get along, and they say it's a, a complete, like, we're being laughed at. So my statement, and I, when you take an office, like, anyone that I hire, they know in four years they can get fired, because somebody might beat me, and they can beat, they can lose. I'm sorry, Mr. Clutter lost his job, I liked him, he, I didn't have any issues, he did a great job. I don't agree with how fast the new commissioners came in, but they did, it's their job. Like, at the end of the day, whether we like the money or not, we're gonna do it. Maybe we need to use it as a precedent that this is a one-time deal, I don't know, but the whole, I mean, sitting there and on my phone, it's just constant, it's embarrassing. So, I mean, and I'm sure you guys have had comments made when I was going at Mr. Byer, that I was being embarrassed. I mean, and more than, but I just wanna let you know that that's kind of where it's coming from, like, we do have to be a team. We don't have to like everything we want to, but we are here as a team, and we have to work better together.
Perfect timing.
Thank you.
You had one twenty-two.
Any other comment from people?
Brian Daggie, two thousand and five west, two fifteen north. I hadn't actually planned to talk today, since we're talking about some things going down the legislature. Uh, I wanna bring up one bill in particular, before I do that, I wanna compliment the council on the discussions today, looking at things and making sure that we have an integrated effort between the commissioners and council to make sure that Bloom County runs smoothly. If we don't have that now, I appreciate the efforts we're looking at trying to improve that. Back to the point I wanted to make, uh, House Bill sixteen twenty-eight, uh, is one that myself, Bloom County Farm Bureau, the State and State Farm Bureau are concerned with, because it basically takes away local control on citing and zoning control of. of energy, water, a whole host of projects that have been controversial on the state. It would allow the state to overstep and supersede the local control. And I don't think that's a good thing we want to do. I think we believe in property rights. We believe in local control. And I think those work best at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Write your legislators and tell me about those 1620.
Is there any other in, in-person public comment? We will switch to online if there's anyone who would like to write a public comment.
What was that?
One second. We were working on the.
Oh, I said that was you.
Yes. Sean, or Sean. He just left.
He just left.
Do we need to turn it up? If you would like to provide public comment, can you please? If you'd like to provide public comment, can you please make a note in the chat box real quick? Okay, we've not received notes. Anyone wants to write public comment? Oh, sorry. I need to water. Public comment online.
I have one comment. I, I want to make a comment before I was gavelled out biasedly. I know the comment that I was, I was trying to make. So Commissioner Byer, Kevin Van Horn asked you a question about you making decisions. With you being the not included, I would just also ask you, in however long you've been a commissioner, if you've ever made a decision on your own or with another commissioner and not included another commissioner. So I'm going to have to answer that now, but I know he asked you, have, have you been included in any of the recent decisions on your, on the committees and not been included? But in your tenure being a commissioner, had you ever made a decision and not included other commissioners? So I know Jennifer wanted to gavel me down and didn't give me an opportunity to speak with others for herself. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, with that being. I have a comment. The county council handbooks, I just threw those at you guys before the meeting started. That was from the AIC conference last week. I haven't looked at it, but I think it's the 2025 edition. So I think that's all I have.
Anything in particular we should look at or?
I, I just got it and undid the, the, I think they put these out every couple of years and they wanted to make sure that every council got it. So they didn't highlight anything in them, but it's now here in your hands, so we can take it.
Is there a motion of adjourned?
Go move.
Say again.
Aye.
Did they come to the meeting?
Huh?